From January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, Set one A three to A four. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Oh.
I did not. I didn't see it until ten o'clock this morning.
Oh.
And I was at work, so no, I did not read them.
Okay, well, we won't be able to approve the minutes then, so. Motion to table that to the twenty ninth?
I still move.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Executive minutes are, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Table two, May twenty ninth. Let's start with call to the public and correspondence. Does anybody have anything they want to say? Nothing at this time? We'll do it again. Okay, so we will move on to six, business. Number A, discussion of possible action regarding cost differential with part-time interim fire chief, fire chief, or full-time interim fire chief, fire chief, regarding all associated costs, benefits, and schedule, cost savings to LMRFD. This is Director Kipper and our accountant, Gabe Bolgers, item.
Gabe?
Yes?
This is Charlotte.
Hello, Charlotte.
Hello, Gabe. Gabe, can you give us a breakdown of the cost savings if the board opted to go the route of a part-time chief versus a full-time chief, whether it be through management agreement or a direct hire?
Yeah, so it's kind of a very dynamic question and answer, because currently, you know, the district has budgeted roughly ninety-three to ninety-five thousand for the chief's position as a full-time position. If we look at going to a part-time, you know, one of the things that's gonna save immediately is about five thousand dollars for the healthcare coverage piece. Then we look at other savings, it's really gonna depend on what that part-time is. Is it a firefighter-type position, working less than forty hours? Because then we have obviously the savings for the wage benefit, wage piece, but we also still have a pension cost. Versus if we're looking at, looking at an outsourced or kind of a contract position, then we still have kind of that, we still have a cost from service, but then we save on the pension costs, which currently for our chief is, for our budget, our budget position now, is twenty-one thousand dollars. So, I guess these are the things that, you know, I need to know, what is the vision on a part-time? To be able to give a, an accurate number is what the potential savings is.
Let's do a couple of scenarios, because I really don't know what the board's going to decide. But let's say we're part-time, less than thirty hours a week, a week. Yeah, thirty hours a week. We would be saving on social security, unemployment. What kinds of things would we then not be paying if it were a position under thirty hours a week?
Okay, so if we look at a position under thirty hours a week, give me one second here, I'll say what we're gonna say.
Actually, twenty-nine to be under the limit of full-time versus part-time.
All right. So if we look at part-time, we're gonna save on the hospital. They're not gonna be, I'm assuming we're still using a suppression person, so it will still be covered to PSPRF, but they won't obviously be covered to, to social security. So if we're gonna be thirty hours a week.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, you said?
Yeah, that, that puts us under full-time's thirty and over. So to be below that.
Okay. So overall, that would be a savings of thirty thousand dollars off of our current, current costs.
Okay. So for a chief at twenty, twenty-nine hours a week, we'd be saving about thirty K?
Correct.
I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at the old NACFed agreement, IGA, between the fire district and NACFed. Have you seen that, Gabe? We just got it.
Have I seen it?
Yes.
You know, I, I saw it, you know, years ago when it was in effect, but I have not seen it recently.
Okay. Because in the agreement, in just kind of reading it through, they do a contractual amount that they then pay NACFed, and they delineated how much the payment would be per month. And, and there was, not that I, and if it's in there, I missed it. Not that I saw any, any benefits, just a flat fee for the services that were being purchased.
Right, so speaking from memory on that agreement, it was simply, it's because it was just a management agreement, there, it wasn't a reimbursement for, it wasn't a direct reimbursement for a employee's position. It was just that contracted amount, so there was no additional spending costs on top of that.
Okay, so if, if that were another option, a management agreement, would we be saving any more than thirty K? Or that's kind of what we're looking at?
Well, what would, what would be the monthly cost on that management agreement?
Give me a second. What do you have, what page are you on?
It's on page five.
Okay.
And that would just be a starting point, though, we wouldn't necessarily be able to get it at that.
No.
No.
Three years later.
Well, I just need to come up with the figure he's asking for. That, that was the total amount.
Page five, under three point zero annual fee amount.
Says four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
So if we figured around five thousand.
Fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty.
So, Gabe, the actual amount was four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay. So you're looking at fifty-six thousand compared to ninety-three thousand. So you've got a savings there of about thirty-six thousand dollars.
Tell me.
That agreement is, you know, would, would be honored, or that price would be honored.
Right, I'm sorry, give me that figure again.
Um, that, so the total cost of the agreement would be fifty-six thousand.
Right.
And you would be looking at a savings off your current cost of thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
That's what, having a chief maybe once a week out here.
I, I haven't gotten any further than, um, looking at the agreement and seeing what was covered in there. I thought it would be helpful, because before we hired a full-time chief, we had an agreement with NACFed and that management agreement. So I was curious what was covered in it. That's why I wanted to take a look, see at it. Any, any suggestions, any ideas, Gabe? If, if we were to save anywhere from thirty thousand to thirty-six thousand, where could we use that in the budget?
Capital.
For the equipment, the aging equipment and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Tell me what, refresh my memory. In, in the proposed budget, how many hours do we have up here in Meadview?
So the, we are looking at.
Thank you, Gabe.
So right now, we've got budgeted for about three and a half days per week for Meadview.
Three and a half days per week for Meadview. Is that less than we have budgeted last year?
No, it's the same amount that we've budgeted.
It's, it's almost like the loaves and the fishes. Because we had, some days in Meadview, we had, that comes to three, six, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen days. And I know there were some days covered up here that were more than that. How, how, yeah, a month, but if this is per week, three, six, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen days. I'm wondering how we got twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-eight, whatever days covered.
Well, one thing that is kind of important to note is, our budget is based off of full-time staff covering DOLAND, and POC is covering Meadview. However, we've not had, since I've been with the district, all of our full-time staff hiding. So there is savings in that, so there has been extra money that have been utilized for POC's coverage. But from a budgeting standpoint, we budget the positions for DOLAND, and we budget the hours to cover for coverage, as well as Meadview coverage.
Okay. And, and currently, looking at the proposed budget, where do you see our weak area?
Say that again?
Looking at the proposed budget, where do you see our weak areas in that?
Really, again, kind of back to what I was saying, I'm really, our weak area, the area that we need to really, I see addressed, is our capital. I think from a personnel budgeting standpoint, I think we've got enough dollars budgeted. I think the issue's been more on actually getting staff to come in and work. So at this point, you know, those dollars need to go towards capital improvement, because the district still needs vehicles to be able to respond to fires, building stations and equipment on those vehicles, stations to house that equipment, and equipment on those vehicles, rescue equipment. So to me, addressing that capital plan would be, should be kind of the higher priority for any, any realized savings by, by the chief leaving and, and looking at an alternative chief.
Do you see under capital improvements, doing leases or purchase with that kind of money?
Um, you know, we have to evaluate the individual capital pieces and everything, but really, there's not a lot of operating dollars or operating surplus for ongoing debt service. And therefore, my recommendation, for the most part, would be outright purchase of, of those assets.
Okay. Kind of like what we did with the heart monitors?
Correct, how we kind of did, we split, we split that a little bit. And so again, that's what I mean, we'd look at it individually and evaluate each option, but, depending on what the item was. But, yeah, definitely need a case-by-case evaluation. I, I don't have a generalized answer for you on that.
Okay. Gabe, that, those were all the questions I had. I don't know if my fellow board members have any.
That answers mine. You have any more questions? No questions?
My answer, my nog answer.
Yeah, mine too. Okay.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. So that's just informational only. We have no action on that. If everybody's agreed to that?
Neither.
Okay. Item six B, discussion and possible action regarding fire chief's services needed in the interim.
When the board set this meeting up, we had been talking about it, a couple of different ways to go. One was full-time fire chief, part-time fire chief, or an intergovernmental agency agreement. We have a short-term issue we have to deal with. The chief's leaving the thirty-first of May. Until we either hired someone or entered into a formal, long-term govern, intergovernmental agreement, we need a, we need chief services. So that's something that we, as a board, have to decide in terms of the direction that we're, we're going with. I know that Chair Ray Bauer was in attendance at the last Golden Valley Fire District meeting. On the agenda was the item of, were they interested in contracting with LMRFD for services? And they, and I was just in the audience. She did the presentation and spoke to them. But the impression I came away with was they were very receptive. And wanted to meet with our board and their board to talk about this. So there certainly, unless I'm doing my calculations wrong in terms of distance, they are the closest fire district to us, except for the Indians' chief. Is there any other fire district that's closer?
No.
So we, we have an organization that is interested in working with us in this direction. So that has to be something we have to make a decision about, by, by, definitely by the next meeting on the twenty-ninth, if not sooner. And then depending on which way the board wants to go, if they wanted to advertise for a full-time or part-time chief, or if they wanted to further negotiate with Golden Valley about a long-term contract, whatever direction we go in, in the interim, we need chief services. And even if we went the route of an IGA, that's going to take a period of time, by the time the attorney finishes reviewing the agreement, and all the particulars are worked out to the satisfaction of both groups.
So should we each, each of us make a list of what we think we need in a, as far as chief services, so that we can present it to Grapevine Mesa? I mean, I'm sorry, to Golden Valley? When we have a, well, we have a workshop, if we get that scheduled. That's another item on the agenda further down, and we can't, we won't discuss that yet. But in the meantime, do we want a menu of items?
Well, I'd like to hear from my fellow board members on this idea of an interim chief until we get a permanent arrangement.
What are you recommending? You're saying an interim chief, who are you recommending?
Oh, I have nobody in mind.
Oh, okay, I'm just wondering, because you guys are pretty much in the dark on all this, because I thought we were still gonna continue to get the process for being able to do applications and stuff going at the same time you guys were doing your thing with Golden Valley, and that seems to have come to a halt. So we've wasted sixty days, and we don't even have anything even set and waiting to determine if we're gonna go with an IGA versus hiring a chief.
Well, I believe that I was directed for, in April, to attend their.
Yes, you were.
Meetings, so that we could determine whether they're interested.
Yeah.
And rather than spin our wheels and put out false hopes with.
Well, I didn't say to advertise it. I said that we're gonna have it ready to go after you went to this meeting, in case we decided we weren't gonna go that route.
Right.
But that's came to a total halt, so we've wasted sixty days right, as of right now.
I don't know that it's come to a halt. I, I don't know that the administrative assistant, maybe she's working on applications, I don't know.
It's not even been advertised, so how can she do applications?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we wouldn't want to advertise it until we knew for sure.
Exactly, but my point is, is we were going to have the press release and requirements and all that available and waiting, so that when the IGA was determined, if we're going that route or not, we would be able to start it maybe the next day if we decided we weren't going that route.
Well, I assume she's probably got that ready to do that.
We haven't finalized it.
This is the meeting that we're determined to determine that.
And I understand that, but I'm just saying, I, you guys are putting this on here, and we don't know what you had in mind when this was put on here. I don't anyways. I mean, with the last two meetings we've had, it's just been talking about the IGA and nothing about an interim or.
Well, we did, we did actually talk about it at the last meeting, about having applications, but not doing that in concurrent with the pursuing a management contract, because we wanted to know whether they would be interested first, before we put the applications out and go through that process.
I understand. I'm talking interim, not the chief or interim, or part-time, or however you guys are gonna classify them. I'm talking about who are you guys thinking about for an interim?
Well, just to cover for a short period of time until we, because it's gonna take a period of time, whether we hire a chief or whether we go with a management contract. And it would make sense that the chief who comes and covers for our chief when he's gone on vacation, or for whatever reason, that, and that is one of the, I think it's the assistant chief from Golden Valley.
Okay, has, has anybody talked to him that he would be doing that?
Well, that is, that's something we need to determine, whether we want to do that or not. That will be part of this discussion here on item F.
Okay.
So it's a two-part of, I guess I have enough to stay on B, because.
Yeah, I don't really either, because it.
Doesn't make no sense to me on that one.
It'll kind of segue into item F down here, so if you want, shall we just, do you want to just disregard item B?
Applications in the last second?
Not.
Ideas of F, application.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we did have recommendations.
I drank up on my family that was in the packet.
Yeah, but that's.
That's what I thought we was gonna do.
Well, the application stuff's not even on the agenda, so we can't even.
That is part of F, is discussing whether we're gonna do a contract or fire chief services. It's kind of all combined together there to discuss that. That's what we're here for today, is to discuss what we found, what we learned. As far as whether they're even interested in pursuing a management contract, that was number one. Because if that was a flat no, then we knew we'd need to go with hiring a chief. If they're in agreement, then that gives us room for, we need to discuss it and decide what we want to do.
I think B could go with F.
I agree.
I think so, yeah, let's just, let's.
Let's go ahead and go to C, and then we'll get.
Yeah, let's, so could we just postpone this and put it with F, or how do we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's in agreement to that?
Yep.
So in the meantime, we'll go to C, then get these little ones out of the way. Discussion and possible action regarding direction to the chief to schedule for May and June, two thousand nineteen suppression coverage for LMRFD.
Um, and this is my item. I know that the chief has already worked on May and.
We're in now? She, right?
And in looking ahead, it would make sense if he could schedule as much as he could for June before he leaves on the thirty-first. So that's what that item is, and that would be direction from the board for him to do that.
I'll make a motion to direct the chief to schedule June as well as May coverage?
I'll second that motion.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Oh, sure.
It's probably gonna be hard for Tony to be able to do for June, because I'm sure he, whoever he brings in on the POCs, they won't know what their schedules are until probably sometime in May. Is that correct?
Yes, the May schedule is done, by the way, just for everybody's information. It's set. Once I saw this item on the agenda, I did start reaching out. We know that with my departure, there is gonna be some loss of personnel. So I will do the best I can as far as a June schedule goes, and that's the best I can do. I cannot be held responsible for how much or how little will be on that schedule.
So then if we don't have the coverage in June, June, what does that do to our ambulance services?
As of June one, that's no longer gonna be an issue for me to handle.
So we need to make arrangements for June?
Well, I understand that, but is it gonna mess with our CO, the CON, or because of not.
Potentially, if the district cannot cover or man its ambulance to cover its CON, it could affect the CON. If it became a long-term issue, yes, the state could, could invite an emergency injunction and issue that emergency injunction to another agency to come in and take over the CON. So that's a possibility.
So we need to move quickly and get coverage, somebody in charge to, as an interim, temporary in between?
It doesn't matter how many chiefs you have, it's gonna amount, the amount of Indians you're gonna have at that point in time.
Yeah, they'll have connections with their own, hopefully. I mean, what else can we do?
Appreciate you working on June, chief.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
That answers my item.
You have a question out here?
Yeah, just a minute.
I'll try.
So, so do we need a motion for that?
No.
It's already got it.
No action.
So then if.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Gabe.
You had a motion that was taken on the floor, and you had discussions, and you need to call for the vote, please.
Okay, I'm not done answering, asking my question. If. If we don't have a paramedic on duty, how are our drug boxes gonna be picked up, do you know?
If you don't have a paramedic on duty, let's say you only had BLS coverage in the district, number one, you've fallen below your CO, certificate of necessity, minimum requirements. Number two, you would have to notify not only DHS, but any other agency that you're running basic level crews. Once again, if that was an ongoing issue, that's up to the base hospital director to decide whether or not she wanted to pull the drug boxes from the district or not. Because you have narcotics in those boxes, and if you don't have paramedics to secure those boxes, you have a potential for the loss of those drug boxes. So lately, there has been two other agencies in the area that have had their drug boxes pulled because they could not provide paramedic coverages at their stations, and their drug boxes were pulled from those agencies.
And do you have an estimate of how many POCs and stuff we're losing?
Um, I wanna say five. I'm not speaking for these guys, because.
No, no, I, I know that. So how many do we have altogether that's actually active and not ones that?
Eleven.
Okay, so we'll lose half of them.
At least. Approximately half.
Okay.
Okay, that's all?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just.
Okay.
Phyllis Saken, Lakeside Drive, DOLAND, in losing your con, you will lose your revenue that supports the district, correct?
For medical services.
Yeah, and that's what brings in your funds, is the medical services.
That's why we're working to get the situation covered before we lose that. We need to get something in place that will take care of that.
And if we're asking chief to leave, maybe that should have been put in place we considered prior.
You can't do that prior to, before the chief.
To a degree, you can.
He retired, we didn't have any, we didn't make that.
Last statement was not, it was a forceful retire, so we all know that.
That's one perception, we can't talk about that.
Yeah, I know.
So.
So, but that's something we need to take into consideration, is losing that revenue. And if the district is going in the risk now, without that, it's gonna be belly up again.
I'd like to note in the NACFed agreement, one of the things that they had in there was that if personnel was needed for LMRFD, NACFed would arrange for that, we would simply take their, their salary.
Yeah, I'm Roseanne Perrigo. I live on West Sentinel, up on the hill. My concern is, it seems like, because you, you simply said you had sixty days, sixty days, sixty days, sixty days. We are now at the last minute, where the chief is gonna be leaving at the end of the month, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, now we're urgent. We know he's gonna be taking, half the staff is gonna be leaving because he's leaving. They're loyal to him, we understand that. Why all of a sudden is urgency all of a sudden here at the last, the last hour? The last bell is ringing, and it's all of a sudden now, oh, by the way, we need ambulance drivers. Oh, by the way, we need fire. Why? I mean, we are, we are rural. I mean, I have watched a house burn across the street from me, because we had to wait twenty-seven minutes for a truck to show up. We had to watch the crow's nest burn, because there was no one answering their, their radios. I mean, this is getting, this is being serious. You guys are sitting up there saying, we are the board, but we're not taking anything seriously. I am watching you guys. Oh, we've had sixty days. I'm sorry, I'm watching four of you. I'm not impressed.
We have been.
I've been here eight months, I am not impressed.
We have been discussing this for.
Sixty days, and nothing's being done, so last second, the man is leaving.
It's not last second, though.
Half the crew is leaving in, in thirty days.
It takes time to get arrangements.
It doesn't take that long.
To meet with people, to get things in order.
But you don't even have applications going out. Applications could have gone out sixty days ago. We got people who are going to die, because we don't have you guys doing your job. That is scary. I'm not, I'm not worried about buildings burning down. I'm worried about people actually dying, because we don't have anything coming, we're in Golden Valley, for goodness sakes. We're looking at forty-five minutes for, for someone to come out here to help us.
Hour and quarter.
Yeah. We got people who are going to die.
Well, they've been dying.
That's right.
Exactly.
Okay, we're gonna have more people dying, because now we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have anything here.
There's always a little bit of a bump in the road when you make a change.
This is more than a bump. You can't put, you cannot say, this person died, oh, that's a bump in the road.
No, I'm saying.
That's more than a bump if someone dies.
There's a change, there's always a bit of a, a.
Not when you have already sixty days. You should have, he says, he's retiring. Oh, my gosh, he's, we gotta get our buzzing gear now. We have X amount of days to do this in, not. Okay, well, oh, oh, now we're down to the last thirty days. Oh, my gosh, we gotta do this.
Have you been to any of the meetings and listened? Have you been to any of the meetings and listened to what went on?
I have watched every single video. Okay, I'm taking a parent, I'm taking care of a parent who has Alzheimer's. I had to wait till I got a baby so I could take care of her. Okay? I have two conditions that's killing me. Okay? I have to depend on somebody to come take care of me when my tubes don't take care of me. Okay? When my astronauts don't take care of me, when they don't take care of my mother. Okay? I'm scared that you guys are not gonna be able to take care of me when the nine-one-one goes in. 'Cause it's gonna take over an hour for someone to come to take care of me.
Did you watch the video on the budget?
I watched every one of them. I watched every one of them.
Did you watch the budget?
What I'm saying is, it, you guys have already had sixty days.
Did you watch the budget preparation?
Yes, I have. I've watched everything.
Did you notice that we have three years, we'll be functional, and then we have nothing?
You won't be, you won't be, you're not gonna be functional even three years.
Not, no.
You won't.
We will if we make a change. At this point in time, we have a very short free time.
The way you, the way you four are functioning right now, it's not going to happen. Like I said, you've already had sixty days. You guys have already shown how you, how your two hands are sitting underneath you, and you're not doing anything. Okay, we can't depend on Golden Valley. We have to depend on ourselves.
Golden Valley would just be providing the management. We would still have our guys out here.
Our guys don't wanna be here. We're losing half our crew already. That's the problem. You're not, you're not understanding that.
Yeah, I do understand. I live here. I live in the fire district, and I know that the service sucks. I wanna improve it.
But, no, you don't. Not gonna wait, not gonna wait sixty days to decide, "Oh, I'm gonna put the application, put the order out."
I, I understand. I understand your frustration. Christine?
Christine Baker, new P O Box eight-five-eight. I didn't catch your name.
Roseanna.
Roseanna who?
Perrigo. You and I talked online before.
Okay. Okay, and I have a few things to say here because you haven't watched all of the videos. I have been here for and recording-
This is a discussion between two members of the board.
The last three or four years now. And this board has been working their heart out, and I cannot stand here and listen to this.
Christine, you have to address the board. You can't have inter-
Yeah, I just didn't get her name. Yeah, that was, it is absolutely ridiculous to say that you don't care. You have worked harder than anybody else. The reason nobody wants to live here is because of the people who are sitting here. They're making this town, and they're making it so nobody wants to live here. Our chief did not live here, lived in Golden Valley.
Okay.
And that's just the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I would just like to make one statement, just for the district. Nobody has died because we have not responded in an ambulance. So let's just get that straight. I mean, if you wanna invite lawsuits left, right, and center, you can make those claims, but I think those claims are erroneous. There's no evidence. Our response times meet the response times of the certificate of necessity provided by the state of Arizona, and we are well within our response times and our response responsibilities. So please, don't leave here thinking that because we didn't respond, somebody died. That has not happened. That has not happened. There is no proof to say that has happened. There's been no lawsuits filed to say that has happened. Um, so, that's, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second on the table. Do we, uh, we need a vote on, to direct the chief to schedule for May and June?
We had the first and second, now we just don't approve it?
We need to vote on it, yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Um, any opposed? No. Motion's carried. Okay, so item D, discussion of possible action regarding review and preparation of vacation and sick accrual information work in progress, chief administration functions, and return of LMRF D property from Fire Chief due to retirement from LMRF D, May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Um, that's my item. Um, chief, I, I appreciate the sheet listing the, uh, the sick leave and, and the annual leave. Will there be, for the accountant, before the end of May, documentation of those days of sick leave accrued and sick leave used, as well as annual leave accrued and used?
Uh, we're working on those right now, trying to, um, verify the numbers, 'cause Ms. Ray Bauer had a question. Um, so, we're going through those hours. But I'm allotted, per my contract, eighty hours a year vacation. Two weeks a year for my interim contract, um, and PTO hours. That was all discussed in, uh, with myself and John Flynn, and myself and the board when we initially took, uh, over. So, um, these hours are calculated based on those calculations and what I've taken so far. So.
Chief, if I'm not mistaken, if you can find in your contract, it says forty-hour administrative work week calculation for paid time off, using a, a forty-hour-
We will go back through the agendas and the agenda items. That was modified to eighty hours, two weeks of vacation per year.
Okay, so the minutes would be helpful to have.
The minutes, or it was either the minutes, or it was an adjustment that was made through myself and John Flynn, prior to the board. Because my, my original hire was from John Flynn.
Correct.
And then we made some modifications to the contract prior to the June one, and then after June one, we came back and made more modifications to that contract.
Okay, because all we have is the contract, and that says forty hours. So the minutes reflecting any changes to that?
The minutes in the agenda items should reflect the changes, yes.
Okay, and what was the other one, PTO?
PTO. So for, because I was covering so many shifts myself, for the duty guys, um, John Flynn, uh, allowed me to accrue those hours as paid time off. So that would go into my vacation bank as well.
Okay.
'Cause I wasn't gonna work here as your Fire Chief five days a week and then cover duty shifts for free.
Right. Did, did he put that in writing? I've never seen that. That's why I'm asking.
Well, that was discussed between me and John Flynn, and he was supposed to ratify the contract, but he didn't. But I'm sure we can loop John in, and he'll tell you exactly what was taking place. I made the notes, and on the sidebar of several of those contracts you have, it's written on the sidebar. And it was also discussed when we, uh, did the adjustment in pay.
Okay. That would be important, because what we have is a contract that says forty hours. So we wanna make sure that that's verified.
We just need not, documentation, I think, is what she's, what we're after there. On the administrative functions, um, who will do these when you leave? The administrative functions, functions that you are currently doing, we have a list up here. Who, who do you, you know who will be doing those when you leave?
I don't know. That's not up to me to decide after I'm gone.
Could you, um, would you mind directing Karen to hire a part-time office assistant to take care of these, uh, functions? So that we'll have a smooth transition there.
Maybe the chief could ask Karen if that's okay, uh, today. What her, maybe she has a solution.
Well, would she be able to use our volunteer that we already have that's not gonna cost us a dime?
Well, she said she's leaving.
Well, Phyllis, she's got her hand up.
If Karen needs my assistance, I have volunteered for over a year. My husband volunteers in a fire capacity for over two years.
And we're very grateful to both of you.
Well, I will help Karen as long as she is the AA, in whatever form she needs.
Twenty hours a week? Would you be able to do twenty hours a week?
No, I will not go in there and sit.
There, I don't think there's really that many hours that need to be.
No, there isn't.
Can we ask the chief to ask Karen what her needs will be, so then we know what that would, right, well?
We can't ask direct, and it's not an agenda item.
Oh, okay.
It's in the chief administrative functions. I was saying, I thought it was part of the-
Not to hire, not to go out to hire, not to add a position.
No, no, no.
No, no, to ask what her needs, to ask what her needs are. Phyllis just said she would stay on and help.
Phyllis needs for twice a week that she does scan adequate, or would Phyllis need to add a few more hours to it, or what? 'Cause I know Phyllis does two days a week now, correct? Mondays and Fridays normally?
Used to be. I go in when I'm asked. I've spent nine hours for the March board meeting, putting the packets together. So, when she calls and says, "I need help, we need to do this," I go in and we do accounts payable twice a month, we need payroll twice a month. We do word packets, putting things, she puts it all together. I just print it out for you guys.
So you're basically saying you'll be able to help Karen when, as needed?
As needed.
But you're not gonna sit in the office?
I am not going to go sit there and take, uh, sales calls. Nobody, maybe once a week, if that, does somebody come in. If we do get a call, it's, "I've got a burn permit, can I burn?" But the crews put those on the board, so they know who's burning and who's not. There's no, there's, it's not necessary to pay someone to sit there from nine AM to three o'clock and twiddle their fingers. So, as long as Karen's there, I will step up.
Karen's listening, I suppose. Can you, would you ask her if that works for her, if that's adequate?
Are you on the line, Karen?
I'm here.
Have you heard all that?
I'm listening, yes.
With the assistance of, uh, Phyllis, um, for the short term, could you manage the-
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
With the assistance of Phyllis, in the short term, will you be man, be able to manage the essential functions of the administrative offices?
Uh, what, for the board's burdenish, um, yes, and I've already secured Gabe to assist me with the other, um, questions as far as payroll.
Okay.
So Phyllis is familiar with the, all the things that you do?
Pretty much. There's a couple of things, um, which only come in every once in a while with the new medical biller, which would be, um, direct deposit checks. Um, but that's not a big issue. Especially now with the new biller, medical biller, we're not getting the checks into the office.
That's what I was gonna say. I thought that went direct, yeah.
Well, we still get-
Oh, you still get them?
The customers that are paying off their accounts a little bit at a time.
Oh, right.
And they send their monthly checks to the district.
So somebody will need to know about-
In lieu of direct deposit, they could make up the sheet and take them directly to the county offices and deposit them at the county offices. But it's always easier to do direct deposit through Wells Fargo. Um, just as a note, you do not have a line item to add any additional personnel for administrative services. Um, it's not in your budget, it's not in budgeted, so if you wanted to address that before the end of the budget year, you would need to speak to Gabe on how you're gonna make that happen.
Right, we do have it in the, the next fiscal year budget, and that takes up. So we have one month of lag there that we would need to cover.
Well, I think Phyllis has generously said she would assist Karen getting those, those needs managed.
Okay, so, um, so I don't think, do we have any action there, or I don't see anything, no?
Uh, Madam Chair, if you can, can you say something?
Hi, you're still open.
Oh, he's still there.
I thought you were gone.
Uh, no, I'm here still. Um, I have some, uh, some internal control concerns on this. Um, if there's not gonna be somebody at the office, and checks are gonna be coming in, um, there needs to be a log generated of everything that's coming in, so we can confirm everything comes in, it's going to the bank. So, I don't know, chief, how many people are walking in with checks? Um, but we'd like to, I'd like an idea on that, so we can evaluate kind of the risk.
Phyllis has an answer for that.
I, Gabe, I currently don't have anybody walking in with checks. We have, we have had, in the past three years that I've been here, an occasional check come in, um, but it's mainly, they send them to the P O box.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so it would be processed then?
I mean, I don't know if it's necessarily, in the middle of the board meetings, discuss this, but we will have to discuss some procedures going forward if there's not gonna be anybody in the administrative office really anymore. So, um, yeah.
Okay. Uh, is that something you would discuss with the chief then, and get straight, Gabe? Is that what you mean?
I think that's-
Say that again?
Is that something you meant you would discuss with the chief and get straight with him?
Yeah, I mean, we'll need to discuss some of the procedures here a little bit if there's not gonna be anybody in the administrative office. I mean, we still have internal controls that we need to follow.
Right.
Um, and my concern is, is, you know, there are only basically being one person receiving money and kind of having all the access to it, so.
Right, okay.
Gabe?
Yes?
I think that's a discussion best had with Karen, since she's gonna be the one handling it.
Say that again?
I think that's a discussion that would be best handled with Karen, since she's gonna be the one handling it after I leave.
Yeah, we'll have to have that kind of discussion on what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
After you leave, so.
And I think still under D, um, return of LMRF D property. Chief, what was your thinking about, um, transferring back to the office, uh, keys, equipment, et cetera?
Well, before the thirty-first, I'll turn everything in. I've already, um, removed some of my personal equipment from the office and taken it home and brought in, um, department, uh, uniforms and stuff that I'm not currently using and, and returned those to the offices already. Um, so, uh, on or before the thirty-first, um, all district property, keys, credit cards, et cetera, um, will be turned into the office.
I, I don't know procedures. Someone have to sign for that?
I will have somebody witness everything I turn in, absolutely. Take pictures and video, the whole nine yards.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Chief, are there any grants pending, written or pending?
Uh, we do have two grants. We have the AFG grant for a water tender that is pending. Um, probably won't hear something on that till, mm, September-ish. And then there's another grant for turnouts through the One Hundred Club, which I have no idea what their timeline is. That is for four sets of turnouts through the One Hundred Club of Arizona. Um, they do not really give you a timeline. It's just, you hear from them or you don't. Um, so those are the only two that are actually in the works right now. Um, the only other grant was the Wildland Grant. We did receive the equipment, and we have yet to receive a bill to pay off that fifty-fifty grant. Um, but that's, like I said, the equipment is already here. And that's pretty much a, a done deal.
Okay. So, I don't see that there's any action on that.
No, no action.
Is that, everybody in agreement to that? There's no action on that?
Uh-huh.
Okay, item E, discussion of possible action regarding memo from the governing board of LMRF D to staff regarding upcoming changes with Fire Chief Services, preparation and direction for the memo.
Um, this was my item. I think it's important that the board put out information, and I think that that would be, um, better decided, and maybe we should move that to the, to the end of the agenda. 'Cause we don't know at this moment. We should, in, in today's meeting, know what direction we're taking to let them know that information coming from the board, and certainly to express our appreciation for their services. Um, so my suggestion, Madam Chair, is to move E. Make that, uh, after I.
Move E after I.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, just really all agree with it.
Yeah.
I don't know, everybody's wanting motions these days, so. I'll make the motion. We move E down to I. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All opposed? Motion carried. All righty. Item F, discussion of possible action regarding workshop scheduling with Golden Valley Fire District regarding a contract and/or agreement for Fire EMS intergovernmental agreement pursuant to ARS forty-eight, eight oh five, sixteen A and C with associated cost of IGA for Fire EMS services with Golden Valley Fire District. Review of previous Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District IGA agreement for Fire and EMS services provided to LMRF D prior and IGA for Fire EMS services information versus interim Fire Chief hiring process. I would like to, um, in conjunction with that item, I would like to read my report on Golden Valley's reception, Golden Valley Fire District's reception of our management contract proposal and my argument for that contract for management services in lieu of a full-time chief. And what I have to say here does not necessarily represent the views of my fellow board members. My name is Ellen Ray Bauer. I was elected to the Lake Mojave Rentals Fire District Governing Board in November two thousand eighteen- My name is Ellen Raybauer, I was elected to the Lake Mojave Rantles Fire District Governing Board in November two thousand eighteen and subsequently to Board Clerk, defaulting to the chair position when our chairman suddenly resigned and moved away, April first. As a little background history, I was hired as secretary to Fire Chief Dave Estenson for the L.M.R.F.D. in September two thousand five. I watched Chief Dave pull the rabbit out of the hat many times during the seven years I worked for him, as he may do and did without, to keep our fire district functioning. I watched for a year after that as others mismanaged the district after Dave retired, resulting in its financial collapse. I watched for three more years as knowledge and experience worked to pull it back, when many said it could not be done. I have watched for the last three years as it languishes, slowly sliding backward as it fails to continue its forward momentum to fulfill its potential. As one of three options being considered by the L.M.R.F.D. board for replacement of retiring Fire Chief Tony DeMayo, I was directed by the board to attend the April twenty-fifth board meeting of the Golden Valley Fire District to determine whether they would be open to negotiating a management contract with the L.M.R.F.D. for chief services. The Golden Valley Fire District Board voted at their meeting four in favor of the proposal and one member, Tony DeMayo, abstaining. Golden Valley Fire Chief Dave Cunningham expressed his support for the proposal at the meeting as well. Fire Chief Ted Martin from Mojave Valley Fire District spoke at the meeting in favor of the proposal. Fire Chief Patrick Moore of the Bullhead City Fire District has offered to assist L.M.R.F.D. in negotiations moving forward and expressed his support of the proposal. The L.M.R.F.D. faces some unique challenges such as serving a very large ambulance con, about twenty-two hundred square miles, and a hundred forty-four square miles of fire district, plus Meadview and Lake Mead City. Vast tracts within its service area do not pay anything to support it. The taxpayers in Dolan Springs and one-third of those in Meadview cover the cost of running the fire district and subsidizing the ambulance service on about a hundred miles of state and county roads to serve more than a million and a half tourists every year, in addition to our local communities. These unique challenges present funding and personnel issues exceeding even those of our neighboring districts. Our fire district faces challenges not so unique, but shared by other small fire districts such as escalating costs of operation with little or no increase in revenue and endless increasing red tape. We are all having to do more with less. We all share the challenge of keeping personnel with much of our base having no roots in the district they serve and easily enticed away with more promising pay and benefits from richer neighboring areas. Experts with many years of experience in fire district management are recommending more and more cooperation between fire districts in sharing services to cut costs. The old model no longer works. The days of every little fire district having its own fire chief attempting to keep up with the high cost of benefit packages, human resource requirements, grant writing, purchasing supplies, I.T. needs, et cetera, are coming to an end. They cannot survive as small, independent little chiefdoms any longer. Part of L.M.R.F.D.'s reconstruction under John Flynn's governance and Chief Moore's management to expedite its recovery from its two thousand thirteen insolvency included, moving our dispatch out of the L.M.R.F.D. station to central dispatch in Kingman. Uh, we moved the ambulance billing and collections out of the L.M.R.F.D. office to a medical billing company. They established an outside accounting firm to create budgets, reconcile accounts, and oversee general bookkeeping procedures. These three changes greatly improved efficiency and stability in three essential components of the fire district function, while decreasing the cost and risk associated with in-house personnel performing those tasks. During recovery, it's actually forty-seven hundred dollars a month, paid to Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District in Kingman, provided chief services, scheduling of personnel, a successful grant writer, supplies purchased at a reduced bulk rate, scheduling of personnel and I.T. specialists as needed, and regular maintenance and repair of vehicles and equipment, as well as generous loans of radios, equipment, and vehicles, among other things. That is the new model that I personally witnessed working to keep our operating expenses low enough to enable L.M.R.F.D. to pull out of nearly a million dollars in debt in two and a half years, while paying a large fee to a county-appointed administrator and keeping the level of service we still have today, three years later, with two guys on duty twenty-four seven and one ambulance running. We have gained one person part of the time at Station Forty-three in Meadview. But we've also gained around twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt and face around a million dollars in looming replacement costs for our aging fleet and outdated safety equipment, as well as leaky roofs needing repair, for which there's currently no replacement or repair plan in place. We were told at a recent board meeting that the only capital replacement plan for the million dollars or so aging equipment needing replacement immediately is leases, because there was not sufficient money in the budget to allow for a capital replacement fund. Even more recently, at our budget workshop for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, we learned that there are no funds for more leases. We, we learned that continuing the trajectory we are on, we have approximately three to five years before our reserves are gone. Emergency purchases will further shorten that time and force us into debt even earlier. We're not moving forward in services to our communities with bare minimums in place, and we're slowly sliding backward financially. I get nervous in my personal finances if I get into a situation where I need to rely on debt to cover my living expenses. I start looking for other solutions before it gets that bad, like increasing income and cutting expenses wherever I can. And I'm feeling very nervous about where our fire district's future is if we rely on debt to purchase necessary vehicles and safety equipment. Every debt acquired requires per repayment with interest, further reducing our ability to build any reserves. The Lake Mojave Rantles Fire District sits on a gold mine of untapped potential that could provide rich sources of funding. It needs cooperative management with vision to see it, free with facts and data for the preparation of analyses to support it and perseverance to pursue it, we have not had that. We cannot afford to complacently accept our current minimal fire EMS service while we slip further and further away from being able to improve it, unless we are okay with having nothing in a few years. Nothing changes if nothing changes, and I propose we adopt the new model of cooperative services among our fire districts now and cut our costs significantly while we're still in a good place financially to do so. This is the model supported by other local fire chiefs with many years of experience and with foresight to see that our economic climate will ultimately force all in that direction. Chief Ted Martin from Mojave Valley Fire District, speaking in favor of the L.M.R.F.D. and Golden Valley forming a mutually beneficial management agreement, stated that it will be better for fire districts to make the move to cooperative agreements voluntarily while we maintain control and have a say in how it is done than to wait until it must be done for us by someone else, as in our insolvency in two thousand thirteen. I vote for plugging into an established fire district, that'd be Golden Valley, with a contract for chief services for a monthly fee, eliminating the high cost and risk of supporting a full-time fire chief. I would like to see this done while we're in a relatively good space financially, so L.M.R.F.D. can be an asset rather than a risk or burden to a prospective partner district, and thereby maintain our autonomy and our bargaining power. And I urge my fellow board members to rise above loyalty to personalities and consider the long-term viability of our fire district as we pause at these crossroads and decide which direction to take it from here. And I propose we take the next step, schedule a workshop for both boards to meet and begin working out the details. That's my proposal.
Um, F has Director Cass and myself on this. Director Cass, I'll, I'll defer to you first.
Okay, if we, what kind of control would the board have with an IGA? How it works with the basics of their bosses for our district, do you know?
It would maintain one hundred percent control of our district, it would be the same as we are right now. We are the governing body, they have their governing body, they govern their district, we govern our district. We would be contracting for management services only.
They gonna do this for free?
No, we pay a fee, pay a monthly fee. And that is what we need to, that would be the next step, is to begin negotiating what services exactly we desire and what fee they would require for those services.
Chief Moore said he would be part of the negotiations with L.M.R.F.D.
Right.
Can I get an examples of some of these gold mines you're talking about? Just curious.
Well, there, like I said, there's one-third of the properties in Meadview that are paying into the fire district. So that means there's two-thirds that are not paying into the fire district. That requires some effort at a legislative level to change so that fire, anybody within a service area of a fire district pays into the fire district.
Okay, so that's basically, we have to go to the legislature to tell them that we need to change laws?
Right, that's gonna require some lobbying efforts.
So that could be never or twenty years down the road?
It, it's a potential, gold mines are not a sure thing.
Okay, I was just wondering what your gold mines were.
That's one of them, the other is making Pierce Ferry Road a go, uh, uh, a, a gold mine, yeah.
Toll road?
Making it a toll road.
I think that's already been discussed, right, Jean?
Right.
It can be done.
How?
I don't think legally it can be done.
Legislative changes again.
Well, there, and that's ten years down the road, twenty years or never.
At the time that they make I-11, well, at some point, hopefully before it becomes I-11, they're gonna do that flyover so it makes the junction there a little bit safer than it is ninety-three and Pierce Ferry Road, one of the most deadly junctions in the whole state. It, it's, it's necessary that the approach to the, the Pierce Ferry Road be made, a different approach in order to make it a toll road, this is what I've been told. And, um, that would be a perfect opportunity when that happens to make Pierce Ferry a toll road. And that's the only way we're ever gonna get the tourists to have any part in helping maintain the, the cost of the firing EMS, the road maintenance, the sheriff's office. That could be a couple million dollars a year into the coppers that Lake Mojave Rantles could have a part of.
Um, Director Cass, I don't know, uh, we just, I don't know when you got your package, cause the-
Last night at seven o'clock.
Okay. So, and it was that, um, NACFED agreement, which I was curious to just see what was in-
Yeah, I just get, I really got to just glance at it last night.
Right, that, 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 Joe, did you have a chance to take a look at that?
I did really look at that agreement.
Did you get it today?
Got it today, okay.
At two thirty?
Yeah, to be exact. Um, this is useful to kind of see what was covered before, because prior to the district hiring a full-time chief, we had a part-time chief, and it was through that intergovernmental agency agreement. And, um, I think the, the workshop is to start to talk about what kinds of things we would be looking for, even short term. And, uh, had talked about holding it after the fifteenth, because I knew you were gonna be-
Okay, cause I was, I was gonna be gone.
Yeah, hold it after the fifteenth, and they usually meet it at five. So that could be a request that the meeting be at five, so that we could, as a board, meet with them and talk with them in, in a two-part piece, the interim, like short term that we need, and then just see what a long-term could look like, to see if that's something that we wanted to buy into. But, um, and I think it's worth looking into when, when you look at a, a savings, if you went the route of part-time, whether it be actual body or intergovernmental agency, you're looking at at least a thirty thousand dollar savings, uh, going that route. And so, um, and I frankly don't know what the menu is for chief, you know, if we wanted twenty-nine hours and so many hours being district, or we wanted, um, certain management things done, or procedural for suppression overseeing. I sense they oversaw the administrative part, but Flynn was in place, we wouldn't have that, we have an AA. So, not looking at, at them doing anything like that, it's just the chief services, it's just purchasing that.
And yeah, and we really won't know until we talk to him and find out with all the stipulations we're gonna have.
Right. Would the, if we was to go with this Golden Valley thing, would the new chief still be responsible for the operation?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of them, they're, all they're gonna do is tell us what to do.
Well, those have limited hours with the chief.
Yeah.
And they'll, they'll oversee what, what the existing chief is doing, it's just a different, different body. And my understanding is that it, it, it more than likely would be, um, Assistant Chief Martin, which is different than Ted Martin, who came and spoke to us last time. Um, and he's covered for the chief when the chief has been on vacation, et cetera, if he's been out. That's the person who's, is that correct, chief, it's Chief Martin who's been the one?
Chief David Martin from the Golden Valley Fire Department has, um, in the past covered for me when I've been on vacation, that is correct.
Okay. So, somebody who's already familiar, and he, he, I'd met him for the first time. I'm bad with names, you remember people, but he, I don't think I'd met him before, and he talked about years and years ago, he used to work out here. I mean, years and years ago, so doing the coverage, he's familiar with the district and, and, uh, to me, that's a plus.
True.
I'm just wondering, uh, you're not talking to NACFED at all, cause I, I'm understanding they haven't had a chief for years.
NACFED was taken over by Kingman Fire District.
It's finally just taken over? How many years did they operate without a-
They're in the process of it.
They're in the, they're still in the process of a management agreement with the city.
Right.
So it's basically the same thing, instead of Golden Valley, they're doing it with Kingman?
Correct.
There is a difference though between taken over and a management agreement, because a management agreement, you still maintain your autonomy, your control of your district, it's just contracting for chief services.
I'm just wondering what they've been doing for the last few years without a chief, how would they function, have you ever talked to them? Cause they have a nice-
They have, they have personnel, they have battalion chiefs, they have other people in, in their office.
They have an interim chief.
Right, yeah.
Cause I read that they could not find a new chief after years of advertising and headquarters and the whole nine yards.
That's it? So, um, we need a motion to proceed if we want to with this, to schedule a workshop with Golden Valley to begin discussing this possibility? It's not like saying we're gonna do it, it's just a sort of discussion.
We definitely need interim, whether we do long-term is another matter, but we need interim. I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Can you clarify the motion for the record, please, so we have official-
I make a motion that, uh, to schedule a workshop with Golden Valley Fire District to discuss a possible contract for fire chief services and interim coverage while the contract negotiations are underway.
Couldn't Charlotte already make the motion?
Okay, okay, that's what the motion, okay, sorry.
You make the motion. That's what I would say. That's what I would say, so that's my motion.
I had it written.
Cause the chief wanted to further define.
Right.
So, I'm good with that.
Does that make sense, Karen, is that okay?
That's good.
Okay.
My motion you second.
Okay, um. Is May fifteenth good for you?
At what time? Do whatever they said.
Whatever, whatever's good for you.
Yes, that's fine, I'll be probably jet lagged, but yeah.
Oh, oh, are you just getting back then?
Yeah, but that's okay.
So if it were like at five, that, that's good for you?
Five, okay.
And, and just only, cause you're working with other people's schedules, the fifteenth good for you, is the sixteenth, and Joe, this, oh, Joe has a call.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth is fine for me.
Okay.
Cause I'm off that whole week.
Oh, okay, so anytime even during the day?
Okay, cool.
Alright.
What about Joe?
Are you, are you gonna be available the fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth?
I'll have to talk to the boss.
You know who that is?
See, my wife has some serious heart problems, and, uh, we're in the, if we weren't in the hospital, we're in the doctor's office.
What time of day would be better for you if you're, if it's gonna work at all?
Well, I don't like coming home in the dark.
Yeah, I don't blame you, I don't either. So earlier, like one, two, three, somewhere?
Yeah, as long as we end it down there by four thirty, five o'clock, so we can get here before dark.
Right, mornings would be best for me, chair. Yeah.
Are mornings okay with you during that week, you said you're off? So like, what, ten, eleven?
Yeah, so I'll take my daughter back in, she gotta go work.
You gonna take time to talk to the boss?
Sure.
Sure. And, and it was alternating locations, so we leave there first, then they come out here and meet with us for a subsequent meeting.
Hold her.
So that would, we have a nice big room.
Oh, do they? I never get in there.
Yeah.
Fifteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth?
Fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth?
Fifteenth, or seventeenth?
Sixteenth or seventeenth.
Okay. Hey babe?
Seventeenth is Friday?
Uh, we got any doctor's appointments between fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth?
We have to, once Joe gets clarified, we have to go down it.
Right.
Right. You know, I didn't choose, this was for them.
But we got the possibility with, with them being off that week.
Okay, the fourteenth then, huh? Okay. That's all I need to know, thank you babe. All right, bye-bye. She says we're open to fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
Great.
But she has one at the hospital, the fourteenth.
Well, I can adjust my seventeenth if we end up having to do it there, so. So we'll, uh, we'll curry them, see if they have something available fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth, uh, in the morning.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that, um, the LMRFD board meet with the Golden Valley Board May fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth in the morning, whatever works for them.
Did we vote on that last one?
Well, you just revised it.
Okay, is that okay, Karen? We can just revise that motion to include the date?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, change that motion to include the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth dates, or whatever we can line up with Golden Valley.
In the morning.
In the morning. Okay, so, um, I'll second that. Do we have, uh, who's in favor?
I.
I.
I am.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding, this is item G. LMRFD Board Bylaws, Article One, Section One Point Four, Number G, for purposes of appointment of a board member regarding override a sixty-day notice requirement. I make a motion to override the LMRFD Board Bylaws, Article One, Section One Point Four, Number G, for the purpose of appointment of a board member prior to the sixty-day minimum requirement, so that we can get that underway.
Can you further define that for me? I, I, I heard motion, but what does that mean? That we can do that the end of this month, that we do it next month?
Oh, we can start the process right now. We can go ahead and accept applications now, we don't have to wait for sixty days, even though sixty days is only three days away, but people are being nitpicky, so I just wanna put this in here to clarify that the board bylaws do say sixty-day minimum, but we are going to override that and get the ball rolling, so we can get a board member on here.
So May, May, the May twenty-ninth meeting is what you're looking at?
Yes.
Well, I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, yes, we will, we're aiming at, um, we're aiming at, uh, interviewing the applicants at the May twenty-ninth regular meeting, and we will at that time, uh, interview them, vote on them, swear them in, and seat our board member at that time.
So that they've done all the stuff required.
Yeah, if they've got all their stuff required, and we'll be, I hope that stuff's available. It's online if it's not here. We're gonna have copies here, but I don't know if we do.
I, I agree with you on that, as long, I still think we still need to work on getting our bylaws up to date.
I agree, and we've got to have five people on the board to do that, so.
Well, yeah.
The sooner we can get a full board, the better.
Let's do it today.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We included that open meeting law in a nutshell in your packets. I was not directed to have it as I hand out to the applicants.
Oh, okay.
But if all the board members wanted to donate their copy to the applicants-
Absolutely.
That are in the audience, they could walk away with them today.
Let's see, like in our mind if they want it.
So then you have a, you'll have until May twenty-ninth to study the open meeting law and be prepared for that.
All right, did you make a motion? Did you get it seconded?
Oh, I didn't think you made it through.
Yeah, that was a motion.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I'm motioning everything today.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, cool. Motion, uh, opposed?
We're good.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, item H, discussion and possible action regarding acceptance and review of board member applications for the vacancy. And we have, we have five applications here. And review today is just going to be naming them, to be sure that we have everybody that we should have, and, um, and then all the rest of the action will take place on May the twenty-ninth. So we have one from Phyllis Aitken, Michael Karish, Larry Tenon, is that you?
Lucky me.
I've never met you before, thank you.
Lucky you.
Lucky me, huh? Theodora Kaplan, and Jay Fleming. Okay, they're all here.
I have a copy of the open meeting laws, if any of them want that.
Yeah, we have-
Yeah, we stacked them all.
I also have, uh, video training that was just updated, if you want that.
Oh, cool. A video thing of the OMS, it's open meeting law?
Yeah.
Is it a link on the county site, or just something you would land in?
I can just email it.
Okay, well, I could go to the app.
So who do I send it?
Should we just send it to Karen?
It has it.
That way she can send it out to us?
Okay.
That would be, uh, K, the letter K, Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N, at LMRFD dot org. Thank you, Jean.
Who you missing? There's one right here.
No. Mike? There he is.
So, I, I wanna remind the applicants to come prepared on May twenty-ninth. Uh, read your open meeting law, no more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, in order to be sworn in and seated.
One, two, three, four.
So there'll be a form you need to sign at that time. And there'll be a APTA training that's required within one year of your being sworn in, and that's, there's one in July in Glendale, which I don't know why they put it down there in the middle of July, that's about the worst time to go to-
Todd or Katie's down there.
Uh, the training sooner, uh, better, sooner than le- the sooner the better, anyway. Uh, there is a January training in Laughlin, which would still fall within your one-year requirement. You have one year to complete that training, so, um...
Madam Chair, I also believe that APTA has, um, allowed that to be done online as well, but it costs the same as going, actually going to the class.
Right.
So it is available as an online video training with a test.
And if you wanna put out your own dollars for that?
With a written test?
Well, with the department coming, they'll take it online?
I don't know, I've never heard.
If a board member goes to APTA, if it's a board meeting requirement, the board's gonna pay, the, the district will pay for it.
If they take it online, will the district pay for it?
It's the same as going to the class, it's same, it's the same cost, it's the same class.
You still have to pass the courses and stuff, just like you as if you went to the-
Yes.
Okay.
It's APTA approved.
So it's online, too? Cool. Well, there's no excuse then, not to take it. Okay.
I mean, wait until January and go gambling while you're at it.
Oh, there you go. I expect you go in January, okay. Um, I guess that's it.
That was I, right?
That was I. Did we pass something up?
No, you did, you did the re- you did the review of the applicants, so.
We moved it, okay.
We're good. Oh, J got moved. I mean, E got moved.
Yeah, E, E is next.
It's the point, E's got moved.
I thought we passed up something that was waiting.
Oh, B and F got put together, and J, which was E. I put J, but it's E. The memo for the governing board of LMRFD to staff upcoming changes of fire district services for curating. Action for that memo.
I think we're down to that.
That's the one she's want, that was the one we moved to the end.
Yeah, 'cause we needed to know what we're doing.
Okay, okay. Okay, so now we're having discussion, possible action regarding, this is, item E, we're moving back to. Discussion, possible action regarding memo from the governing board of LMRFD to staff regarding upcoming changes with fire chief services, preparation, direction for memo. Okay.
Now that we know what we're doing, as far as having decided to meet with Golden Valley, I think it would be important for the board to put out a memo to the employees, and, and let them know how much we appreciate all that they do, um, that the members of our community benefit from their services. And that at this moment in time, our board is going to be meeting with the Golden Valley Board on mid-May to, uh, discuss, uh, arrangements for an interim agreement for chief services. And the board will then decide if they're gonna proceed with long-term services or, um, advertise. So that they know what we're doing, and they're hearing it from us, and that we're also thanking them for their service. And is that something chiefly, we could have you direct the administrative assistant to write, or is it?
Excuse me. If you would like to, um, email her your wishes, then we can have that formed into a memo and sent out to the, to the staff.
Okay, all right.
I think the best thing would be to put everything in an email, send it to her, and then that way she can write it out and send it out.
So we can- Are y'all good with the wording I just said?
Yeah, and I'd like to make sure we put the date that we're gonna be meeting to.
Right. So, um, we can send that directly to Karen? We don't have to, uh, go through you to get that to her?
That's what he said, to send it to Karen. So, what, what I can do is, um, board members, I can put this together, quickly email it to you.
Give me, email it to Karen and let her email it to us.
Right.
Okay.
So that you get it, and you can have input on any wording changes, stuff like that. Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that, that Charlotte prepares the, uh, the draft memo for the, um, personnel, send it to Karen, to send to the rest of us for approval, the rest of the board for approval.
Just second it.
Okay, I'm second.
Okay, all the David?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All, motion carried. Okay, number seven, consideration of future agenda items.
I think definitely should be the outcome of the, um, May meeting with Golden Valley Board of Directors.
Right.
And, um, also the documentation for the annual leave and sick leave.
Right.
And of course we tabled the executive minutes.
Yeah, the executive minutes.
Oh, yeah, executive minutes, good. I would like to, um, add on there a, uh, to consider a volunteer committee going forward. I've had several members of the community suggest re, uh, energizing our longstanding volunteer arm of our district that we have not had for a few years.
Volunteer committee to do?
To, um, uh, recruit?
To look into the idea.
Yeah.
Oh, to help with the volunteers?
I can't think what the word is, but, yeah, to, to, uh-
Where do they go to, to apply as a volunteer?
Online. There's an application out there.
Just go to the, uh, Ranches online?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then the application would go to the administrative office.
Right, and Karen's working on updating the volunteer application at this point, so. Anything else?
Nothing I can think of.
Okay, our next regular board meeting will be May twenty-ninth at two-thirty in Dolan Spring. That's because that was to accommodate the attorney's availability. Uh, that'll be at the Chamber, I guess, doesn't it? I bet it's where we usually use, the Chamber of Commerce building?
Right.
What time is the board meeting? Does it run soft that day?
That's just two-thirty, regular meeting.
Yeah, two-thirty, 'cause he wasn't avail- he's available only, not till one, so we'll-
So the board needs an executive session at one?
Right. Okay, that it? Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I've got four-thirty-one.
Four-thirty-one, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, Jean.
Thank you.
Right, exactly.
Seriously.
Speak to you, Larry.
I want- Too many years.
They don't take the two times.
Oh, yeah.
Just leave them, because I don't know where they go, just yet.